Okay, moving on to agenda. I'm three approval the agenda commission have an opportunity to go through the agenda. If there's any changes or amendments or modifications. Not have motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
I.
All opposed?
I have it.
Thank you. I'm forty consent agenda. All I want to consider routine to be enacted by one motion without discussion. If a member of the government board request discussion of an item, I will be removed from the consent agenda to consider separately. If the commission had opportunity to look at the consent agenda, if there's no changes or anything to be removed, but I would like to accept the consent agenda in its entirety. All in favor?
I have.
All opposed?
I have.
Thank you. Moving on to five on the agenda, public comments. I see that we not everybody has signed up. But my open for public speaking. We'll move on to six. Around six A, I'll address that. Holy resolution one oh nine, I'm just press and appreciate for the service dedication deputy Joseph Brandon Gore. I run the sheriff's office. The reason doing this, ones don't know deputy Gore or passed away for COVID. He came to work at our office, I think, I can't remember that date. But I'm the one that actually hired him. He was a super nice guy. Great personality. He worked in our detention center as patrol office, went outside to field. For a short period of time, then he ended up in protective service with his personality that fit where he should be. Personality had, he made some good changes when he was in the protective services, way he worked with people to talk to them. And devil out, great guy. He was only thirty years old. When he got COVID. But we just want to express our. Thank you for this resolution, resolution honor, express appreciation for the service dedication deputy Brandon Gore. Running County Sheriff's Office, where Brandon Gore performed as running county in September nineteen ninety faithfully. Serve the public front and sheriff's office detention center and the division of protective services. Where Brandon Gore performed as youth faithfully, with a bond as a kind as young soul and advocate for call service, thank you children research center. Where this young man Brandon Gore of only thirty years of age and serve our county as a deputy, come had the COVID nineteen in March of this year. And one of the casualties of this year long pandemic. Now therefore being resolved into me, you will notice and assembled at the Bevill board of commissioners here by honor of July for Dr. Brandon Gore. And express his heartfelt appreciation for the dedication service upon the county and its residents. This twenty sixth day of April twenty twenty one. So I have a motion that we accept resolution twenty one oh nine.
Soon.
All in favor?
I have.
All opposed?
I have it.
Tomorrow, I will personally get this to this family on behalf of family. Thank you all for that. Okay, moving on to B, I'm six, all presentation by Greg Adams, CPA of Thompson Price Scott and Adams Company. Okay.
Stuart, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. It's a little bit low volume, but I can hear you.
Okay, you're full or you were sorry?
Okay, so first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I am Stuart Hill with Thompson Price Scott and Adams, filling in for Greg Adams. He had some prior obligation, so I'll be with you for just a few minutes here. So. I can go ahead. Do y'all have the copy of the presentation summary?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna be, I'll go through that. We're just gonna run through that quickly. And so we'll, we'll first acknowledge that this audit presentation is for the year ended June thirty two thousand nineteen. So it's a little bit behind time, but that's, that's what we're presenting tonight. So and again, we appreciate the opportunity to do your June thirty two thousand nineteen audit report. And we're gonna go through a couple of little housekeeping things first, and then we'll get to a little bit of some data. And then we'll be wrapping it up. So first of all, we basically. Review and look through your procedures and. Activities to see that there's no material errors noted in your, in your records. And basically, that's, that's on the page that starts with the required communications is where I'm starting from here. So that's about the third page of the audit right after the index. So there, no material errors were noted. Our work wasn't limited in any way. The staff was providing answers to questions and information that we needed to be able to do the audit. There are some, some significant deficiencies in internal control that, that will you will see in your management letter that you should have. And so there are a few little things there that needs to be tweaked a little bit, but all in all, the audit process was, was smooth. We didn't, we didn't note any changes in your accounting procedures or in your estimates or. In your, your estimates and judgments were, were reasonable and valid. And there was not a lot of major adjustments that had to be made other than the normal. This, that's typical. We didn't have any disagreements with the management. And there would, there was no reason for any, you know, second opinion from other accountants. And there was no, nothing in the area of prior retention issues. So all that's good. The, there was, again, there's no significant difficulties throughout the audit. And there was no irregularities or illegal acts noted. So all that's good. So that's getting that out of the way, the housekeeping. But then we can go on with the, some of the data. And that's on the page that. Is, is, starts with the summarization of some of the key items in the audit report for the general fund. So at June thirty two thousand nineteen, your cash and cash equivalents in your general fund was six hundred ninety thousand five hundred fifty five. Your revenues for the general fund were one million two hundred sixty nine thousand two hundred fifteen. Expenditures one million six hundred fifty two thousand five sixteen, which gives you a net deficit change of three hundred eighty three thousand three hundred and one dollars. Basically, the undesignated portion of your fund balance that the local government commission recommends is a hundred and thirty two thousand two hundred and one. That would be eight percent of your general fund expenditures. And yours was actually seventy one thousand one sixty four. So that's a little on the low side, that's a little on the low side. The fund balances available as a percentage of the general fund expenditures, yours was four point three one percent. Your tax collection rate was ninety eight point oh four percent. And. So that's, that's where we are on those items. The next page for your public utilities funds, your cash equivalents, cash and cash equivalents was four million one hundred thousand seven hundred forty six dollars. Revenues were twenty eight thousand eleven dollars, expenditures eight hundred fifteen thousand five thirty, giving you a deficit of seven hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. Next page is an analysis of the fund balance. This is the general fund balance, and this is a five-year trend, so you can see, you know, the, any, any trends. You can see for two thousand nineteen, your. Your total general fund balance was nine hundred three thousand six hundred fifty four. Part of it that is already preserved is eight hundred thirty two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. And you can see how that compares to the previous four years. For the next page, we're looking at fund balance available as a percentage of the general fund expenditures. And you can see that how that, that has been coming down a little bit. So that, that general fund balance is, is a lesser percentage of the general fund expenditures than it has been in the previous years. So that's, that's, that's an area for some improvement. And basically, I mean, that's, that's kind of dry stuff. I know it's important stuff, though. And that's basically where we, where we have. Got into with the June thirty two thousand nineteen audit. We are in the process of starting the June thirty two thousand twenty to try to get that now as quick as we can, because this can be coming up on twenty one here shortly. So. And with that, once again, I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer it. If I can't, I'll touch base with Greg and. And somebody will get back to you if, if we have any questions that we don't get answered.
Okay, thank you for permission, any questions you'd like to ask? Staff or any comments?
I just want to thank this, we're taking the fashion and long part.
Okay, I'd say thank you all, thank you again, and thank you organization for going thorough on audit, and we appreciate it.
Well, we thank you and appreciate it and hope you all have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, number six. See, presentation by Kendall Park, President UNCW Rowing Club.
So.
Come on forward, sir.
I'm coming forward. Is this, do you want me to be like, mic to microphone? All right, cool. I was like, I was heard about last time, so I didn't quite know how far. Um, so yeah, thank you guys for giving me this opportunity to speak to you guys and our club. And while we're really interested in potentially moving to the, to the, to the Yavo. So I'm Lieutenant Park, as you said, I'm the president of the Rowing Club. And then she's not looking tonight, but I also the vice president or table. Um, she's on the screen right there to. She can leave at the last meeting, but she's been like in her role to help me out with a lot of this stuff. For the next one. So I just wanted to kind of start off with our mission as I kind of introduce who we are. So our mission statement says UNCW Rowing Club strives, strives to provide a competitive rowing experience. Um, to rowers who strive to do their best with on and off the water. And so that's kind of a overall general motto of how we like to see our club. We want people who are dedicated to rowing, they are dedicated to the sport, they want to do good in that. We also want well-rounded community tools who are really looking to better their academics, they have a good social life. So we kind of see ourselves as part of a very holistic person for our rowers. Um, we are a student rowing rowing club under campus record, the campus recreation department. Um, so we're not varsity athletics, but we are like a close sport. Uh, and we are a competitive rowing club. So we are going, are hopefully gonna go to some regattas in the fall of twenty twenty one. Um, the university, of course, expects to be open full time, but we will kind of guard from that issue of COVID. Um, typically, we have around ten to twenty members. This year, we have about seven active members, at least some are inactive because of COVID and because they're trying to sense resistance. Um, so we don't have a great count on who's active and who's not. But we are really pushing club growth and expansion, because we really see the expansion of the club as one of the key ways. And that we can really build a very competitive club, because once you get more people, they start competing against each other, they start driving each other. There's a, you know, amount of personal accountability within the club. So that's really, um, been a very key part of what we've been doing the last couple of years. So I think kind of looking into our goals for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year, obviously becoming a more competitive club. Um, we obviously want to become a club that is very competitive, it was on the North Carolina level, but eventually on the Southeastern regional level with other collegiate clubs that we. Um, interact with and that we race with. And we definitely see this as a very attainable goal, definitely within the twenty one, twenty two school year. Um, and part of that is really three key components, which is more actual practice days, more competitions, and looking for an internal drive for our members. So I'll hit on the, like, actual practice days a little later. Um, for more competitions, we're just seeking to, like, go to more regattas. We haven't been to one since the spring of twenty nineteen, and that was just a scrimmage. And before that, um, the, the last time I went to, like, an actual regatta sponsored by US Rowing was before I was on the club, so before the fall of twenty eighteen. And then, of course, looking for an internal drive for our members, looking for members that come to practice every day and they really want to be very, like, focused, they want to get in all the lanes. And, you know, that helps with more competition, that more competition, like, this helps with our drive as well. And so all these are very, like, interconnected goals. Um, but second is being more established in our competition, and this is kind of both on campus and also, like, numbers wise, I'm just not trying to, not like to run in, but, um, the past at least. Numbers wise, our club has been pretty, um, I think that's probably early in the past, a couple of times in the past. And so really kind of go, so it's not, like, always on that level. And then obviously, um, completing, like, a more of a corporate transformation is coming in since twenty twenty. That's when I became president of the Rowing Club, and I really said, hey, I want to lay on a different region of what this club can be and what we can do based on my experience. And so I really try to finalize that as I go in the next year is a personal goal for myself. So a little bit about our, I'm just, the River Lawn. Um, so kind of hinting a little bit at why I started with the more actual practice days. Um, the River Lawn provides a, I guess, geographic situation that is a little bit different than where we practice now. I guess the land is slightly more sloped in that area, so it blocks and a lot better. And when, of course, the banks have water, how choppy it is, and if there's a certain, like, trouble that we just can't figure out. Um, currently, we lose about a very rough apple of our practice days to wind. And so really trying to reclaim those days would be, you know, a huge and significant progress, because we could, like, be more competitive. Every day, we, like, have to cancel practice, the other teams are, they're out practicing, and they're, you know, they're having us. Um, we also know that, or not know, but have experimented with my practice at the ball, like, we actually did that a couple of times last week. And found it was really, like, suitable, like, isolation. Uh, we actually did it at the Duke Energy Pavilion, we had did some circuits there, because the wind was actually bad in the Marine, the women's and men's area where we currently practice. Um, and then the park is just more of a recreation. Um, we do practice at Marina, which is kind of south of the port, so it's an industrial area. It's not really built for recreation, to be honest with you. And so kind of both of those things create a situation where it's like, we, the club almost was almost out of place. We have, it's just not, uh, it's not in a location that will, that, you know, it is negative presence. And so we've also seen, whether it's on Aldo, like Eagle Island Rowing Club, it's with partners, um, those, you know, I've looked at the field a lot. And it's been a really nice four years, um, with everyone and, like, actually, like, kind of, like, being wanted to a degree, like, being wanted in a site. Um, in our current, so, um, in our current site, we are in Marina, we're really not much in our own environment. So it's not like it wants to be very neutral towards us. Um, so having kind of a positive connection is really nice and, you know, really valuable for the last, you know, year or so that I can kind of work through here. So when looking for our general meetings, um, obviously, the first one is kind of a floating or a load line dock. I know that there are specifications for the ones in county. And so it's something that isn't quite as high as, like, a typical, like, dock, and you have, like, a boat, like a motorized boat. Because what will happen is the, the birds, they open the side of the boat, they'll crash on the dock, and basically that counts as a voyage. Um, we do have one shell that is longer than Eagle Island, it's a shell that's sixty two feet. Um, the others are not any longer than Eagle Island shells, and I think you guys have heard from them in the past, so that would, I mean, there's a good, like, judgment call there. Um, we potentially would have four shells by fall of twenty twenty one, we currently have about three, and we're looking at our purchase ones, that is a good A plus. Um, and so without, by the spring of twenty twenty two, because I know that's kind of when you guys are looking at what are your improvements, we might have a big boat. Um, that might be your place at a question, because it's just a order boat. It might be to keep the, the A shell on, um, just for, like, novices and new people, um, that would be kind of something. So it might be a good boat by the spring. Um, and then something that we kind of look toward right now, the way our setup is, is that we have a, we have a boat trailer, and basically that's what we use for, like, normally, like, trains, for your boats, for that, you know, between the competitions and that. But that's where we store our boats, and it's really kind of a situation, and I live, I'm struggling a little bit tonight, going. Almost like you're, like, looking like you're practicing ready to go, but constantly. And so potentially, like, something that would be needed by our club, and, you know, we can, like, help out with this. Obviously, it's like racks for boats, like, looks if we're like established and permanent position. And that's just something that looks for our rowers that we, they go there, like, they know, okay, this is, like, where it's, like, home, what it's like for the rowing club. Um, and so the last thing is, like, working for a chase boat that we watch. Um, we do have to have a certain policy about motorized chase boat out with us, and what we're practicing. Um, it's, uh, I couldn't really recall what I was saying. Um, like, that specifically, but it's not a huge, it's not a really large boat, like, that we want at the, um, at the motorized, uh, launch at the park. But it would just be somewhere, I guess, like, to store that, um, on site. And then this is kind of, I don't want to, like, talk a ton about this, but obviously with a partnership, you don't want to have, you know, salvage market, you know, dual assets. Um, so I kind of came up with some things that would be benefits developed from this partnership. And obviously, some of it is speculation, um, but just from my experiences is kind of what I see. So, like, obviously, um, people have done studies saying that rowing is a, so people would desire. So kind of rowing is a variance, um, both the, the River Lawn, the surrounding river, has, you know, a huge pedestrian down to down here. But you guys are looking at that, and I think that would be kind of something that would be kind of a need addition, um, obviously one in the future. But for people who are there, for people who are there, I think it will be kind of a nice thing. It's not very well, and it's, um, obviously, I think it's not very common in North Carolina, so I think people are trying to it. Um, and it's kind of looking at Billville being somewhat of a major rowing center in Southeastern North Carolina. Um, I know that from my personal experience in high school, um, the way I plan, where I participate at, we do our parking golf. And the, sorry, the golf club came first, and then there was, like, a, it's stable there. Um, they're all involved in a high school team, just, you know, decent sized. And so obviously, I think that if you expand rowing, it's going to be available, you know, people will want to join, so they want to create parts of the crew. So I think that there's a possi, there's a possibility, I don't want to say, like, it's definitely gonna happen, there's a possibility of it being kind of more established in Billville. Um, something where, like, one in ten, um, might not have at the moment, I really find that difficult to get, because there's only two more including, uh, theoretically, of course, um, in Billville. So that's something that, you know. And then this third thing was obviously kind of related to that. Um, back in the spring of twenty nineteen, I got a message from Paulie Charles, and he was like, looking to set up some sort of scrimmage, and we just were not available. Um, at the time to, like, either post or wait for it to extend to, you know, us a few. But obviously, I think that would be something that maybe we need to establish in, I know other teams on the current, similar kind of thing. So it's gonna be the possibility that we could, one day, with the department, develop. So, yeah, so things that I thought of are benefits, and I think that is the thing that, so the big concept, I will go ahead and finish on that. Um, is that we're looking to partner with you guys, so you know our goals, um, as a club, also, and with that, I will take any questions, thank you guys, so it's.
Appreciate you coming, and I know you talked about college and great. Of course, you know, some of the issues and problems come out, you know, we've had from the call where our shoreline is, where it's, I don't know, it's a little tight.
Yeah.
How much the cost of that, they won't allow us to, right now, we can't dredge, let's dredge out, we can't do it.
Yeah.
But recent, I was kind of interested in my first job, just rest of the year, and we're looking at everything to benefit our park, but the teacher too. And I think that part of the concept, we got Eagle Island, what's, uh, public. They go down, they might go to Washington, and you gotta create our rowing. If you have competition, that's something that we can narrate, if people come down back and watch.
Yeah.
Go and have bands on purpose, education by, you know. And pick some people of the class that are about to row it, and I'll look, as far as your club, and that's briefly speaking from the college, or how does your organization work?
So my understanding is that it would be strictly due from the college, that would be a lot of them practice. I think we can maybe engage with the community, I know that, obviously, other clubs, UNCW do community service events and such, um, so I definitely can be engaged, but in terms of, like. Probably putting people in boats, to be honest, is probably, um, just for college students, and that's probably a risk that there is just a.
I understand that, it's just, uh, just an interest, I think, uh, I've watched. From the events and competitions you see on TV, I like watching very. Think, and I'm trying to think, uh. It's being working, we're getting ready to do a lot of work on our park system, uh, you know, we've got central club, the people out of clubs, that give us ideas that we're. Advancing what we're trying to do to make the river more accessible and protected at the same time. Have a good partnership.
Yes, sir.
At least the commissioners don't have an issue with it, at least we would try, staff will go with it, and that's, I think. Thank you for, uh, commissioners, and you know, any comments or questions?
All the questions I have is, if we were to engage with this, it would be, it would have to be a partnership between you guys and the Eagle Island Rowing. Um, with us, is there any problem that suits the cohabitation of a facility with you guys and the Eagle Island Rowing? Because I don't think we would be able to do two separate facilities, it would have to be a co-haven location.
I don't necessarily see a problem. Um. Definitely not within the next, like, few years, to be honest with you. I know their club is growing, and I know we're pushing our club to grow. Um, and so I think some of that, like, might be, like, just. In what way, where are you thinking about, can I ask that, like, for the.
Well, we have a couple of spots that we have talked about, look at possibly in the future to set up, um, for them to use as storage.
Hmm. I just know, like, they brought me out to one area, and it was, like, constrained by the trees, and I could see in my four or five years, that it could eventually become a problem, to be honest with you, just because it is so. It's so constrained, there's no, like, rollable space. Um, but if there's not, like, a huge, like, constraint aspect, I don't think it would be a problem. And then at the same time, um, I think all of this workable. And then at the same time, um I think all of this workable is done. It's probably a good.
Something that will have to work out. We're um hopefully here in the near future, our park is gonna extend a lot further north. We'll take in a lot more territory together. More of an opportunity, maybe where you can fit in even better and uh because you kind of have all access that wouldn't interfere with the main park, which is still in our park system.
Hmm.
And uh maybe work out that way. One of the other risks I'm looking that we want to entertain here, what y'all want to do, how many where how much boats have, what's your potential for growth? Because you have to understand, you know, uh it's always a little bit tougher when you integrate what we call privacy into a public park system. And uh for us, really just by a lot of ways, we don't ask for like the monetary and all that, but how does it or the public being able to see what y'all do?
Hmm.
Uh that's a draw. A lot of people love to watch it. Many folks studying sporting blood down or
Yeah.
Uh love to watch any type of skill like that. I don't like that a lot.
What do you typically practice? mornings or after meetings? So we've been doing five o'clock during the week on as a or five thirty, actually, because people have to get out of their four forty five classes and all that to the site. So about five thirty, you.
One question, that similar with Merrill was whether there would be any timing conflict where people are on.
Yeah, um so to my knowledge, they well, I have like, I've rode with them in the past and I know that it was always in the morning time. I think they may have like, and this might be better for them because I don't know their publics well, but they do. Um they may have like an afternoon practice times, but I don't know what this has to mean, to be to be honest with you. Um and currently, we also rode with another rowing club, a Wellington Cup, a Rowing Club. And we share the same dock and we never went into an issue in terms of like that.
How's your season typically?
Um so there's two seasons. So one runs and involves so from um really about as soon as we go on campus, so like early August until the second week in November. And then it will start back um a little before March one, well, one or two weeks um for like last week of February or so, and it will run until really right enough to be honest with you.
We don't probably. I'm just a little hesitant because we have a lot of things that are up here.
Hmm.
As far as you're thinking of Eagle, I've been kind of talking a lot about what they want to clear to cut down trees.
Yeah, of course.
It sounds like a lot of space. I really don't want the park to be. So that's my expectation to say. So I think it's great to be on this, as far as the location. I just kind of need to see what we are.
Yeah, of course. I think and see I see and I've been to that area, but I don't think I can decentralize it quite as much as they can. Um so I can see a little bit, I can s- I mean, I can see a picnic area, but if they have other plans that might be on, I mean, we have a good idea of what each other are saying, but I don't think I know a hundred percent of what they're saying. So I could be wrong in what I said.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I don't expect you to understand the subject. What they did take over in the park.
Yeah.
And so talking about so much space of this.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I definitely understand. Of course.
If you're, if you want to could, um I don't know that more than that would probably end up a little bit more visual um. Yeah, because I don't know what's gonna happen with the Eagle Island Rowing Club right now.
I think that um Mr. Aaron, I don't know. It's uh a method to use for not more than allows much.
Yes.
I think something like, I'd like to see this viable. I think that'll be I think we've got a potential have a good relationship. Uh like Mayor Pro Tem says, since it's a public park, you know, we're not we start taking up space, that's the space we take away from the public.
Yeah, of course.
Uh but as far as uh murder, but we want to dance and different things to happen in our park.
Hmm.
Parts of also going large in the next few years, quite a bit. I think just to lose y'all out and maybe get that worker relationship together and beneficial for the town, real club, for people here to be able to see this type of being. Could be some tangible. Or doesn't have a problem, I say, at least let's give it a working process. Look at it, uh do some more analysis on it, maybe sit down with maybe a year, a team member. Walk down there, look at it, let's see what we're talking about, how much space you think or how we would see what could work out. Without being direct. We don't want it to be an issue with the public when they're down at the park.
Yeah, of course.
If the interaction is good, that pre-conflict or that place that we're trying to utilize, or like I said, if we get the rest of the park, we're gonna lose quite a bit.
Hmm.
That's gonna be where it might be ideal for you to answer boats at, but it's not space that that the public as a whole
Yeah.
can utilize because it's just not big enough on the rear front. I'd like to further look into it more, you, I think you know, somebody else, let's go down and take a look at it. Yeah, my my.
Sure.
The port of all have problems, at least are not making any harm for minimum. Those are making them too. Let's take a now look at it. Any issue with that?
No, I I just, I think what I really want you to focus on is the dock. Yeah, because I know that people who are came here to talk about how the dock, the process exactly that they need. So we talked about two docks. Three docks, multi-purpose dock, you know, so you see how it starts getting.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got what you're saying.
But that'll be something I want you to.
Last thing, since we're our public park, we don't frankly both that putting forward, if you want to do that, I think what we're talking about is more permanent relationship
Hmm.
that our town and park system so y'all have problems, threats, uh staff, I found that we you can, it should be a formation point and uh let's see if we can get together, y'all come over, we can go down to the park, look at it. Get a better picture of exactly what's going on there. And keep that organized and how we can put this together, make it something I think the town people, this region area would like to see.
Yeah, yes.
I feel like I think a lot of people love to go down to the rear front, be able to watch y'all going down that water, the practice.
I agree. I definitely agree.
So. I'm looking forward to the sponsor still.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it as well.
Thank you so much for coming.
I can't find it.
I think just a thing that if you call, you call her. We'll go ahead and put this together. Let's take a good hard look at it.
Alright, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Do you have comments? Grab a shit right there. From building up. Dogs and cats. And uh what I'm really picturing is if we open up the rest of these areas in there, it might not be big enough for us to really leave, leave it up for a small road club.
Just saying, well, we have some work on that.
Sure.
Sale books, where you stand on.
Wind surfing club?
Kind of like wind surf, but they serve their sailboats.
Well, apparently there's no wind out there.
I'll just keep.
Oh, y'all, I think y'all, y'all know sometimes that's that perfect. You know, our place. Thank y'all for that. Okay, moving on to item seven, public hearings. Public hearing for per consideration action upon the question statutory updates and various articles that found while ordinance in subdivision or commercial regulations. 戳干的，你懂啥意思？ One sixty D if I'm correct, require section where I say to the available on the question down hall or back hall. Number here. Yeah, you wanna talk about the four? We opened up the public comment.
Um yeah, I figure I'll go through a relative quick introduction. Um so in your package, you should have the document. bunch of slides that we go with, Sharon has it on the screen. Um so eighteen pages I wanna go through really quick. I tried to summarize everything that the planning board went through over a little over six months worth of work. So so definitely consolidation is a lot of work. I wanna thank um Mr. Blancher and Sanarrington and everybody from the town and getting everything put together. Um and Sharon, just to make sure, do you have the uh all the individual documents we can pull up on the screen as well or? If not, I believe everybody has a binder. There's a few things that I'm going to be slides and I'll refer back to the actual word and separate amending. So first off, a little bit of background. Uh so one sixty B, it's a new chapter in the North Carolina general statutes. Uh it's a major overhaul of all the planning zoning statutes in North Carolina. Uh chapters titled local planning and development regulation. Uh it was created by a session law twenty nine, twenty nineteen dash one eleven. Uh became law on July eleventh, twenty nineteen. Uh there were three main reasons for doing the update. The first one being consolidation, um getting many of the statutes uh put all into one place. Um there's also that organization, in other words, user friendliness. So it's a lot easier uh to find what you're going there to look for. And then also modernization, there was, for example, a lot of terms uh have been updated. For example, uh the old term special exception is no longer used as and uh in place as a special use permit, which y'all have probably heard of before. So in terms of consolidation, prior to this new chapter one sixty D, all these regulations were put in chapter one fifty three A for counties and one sixty A for cities and towns. And one sixty D consolidates all that into one chapter and much of the language in uh one sixty K. When applicable to developmental precision and bounds. Uh a lot of that has been repealed and that is now included in one sixty D. And one sixty E echoes a lot of the language that was in the whole one sixty range. Uh the effective dates for one sixty D uh was originally scheduled to be January first of this year, but it was extended to June first due to COVID. So all these amendments that we're looking at tonight are required by the town to be well, the town ordinance is required to meet the requirements of one sixty D as of June first, since I'm June first. And additionally, there is a comprehensive plan requirement that is also due by July first of twenty twenty two. And that ties to the vision plan that the town is currently working on. That's what that comprehensive plan is. Page, page three of these slides. Um also in your packets, well, in the binder here is the first document is the summary of changes. And that's in order of the zoning ordinance article, so it goes in order of the zoning ordinance. And uh here in the slide, I list out all the articles that are being amended. Uh three, five, six, eight, nine, fourteen, fifteen, twenty two, and also the subdivision ordinance. Uh additionally, in addition to the one sixty B items that we're looking at, the amendments also include everything related to the change in a town's form of government. So for example, all the appearances of town administrator, change to town manager. So you can still see all those changes in amendments as well. And uh the slide from here on, pretty much built in order of that list of articles that are listed, taken one by one. So starting with article three, this is the one that jumps around the most. Uh as we get into the later articles, it kind of has a better flow to it. It's gonna feel like we're jumping around here for a minute. Uh for one, uh there's a requirement in one sixty D regarding the definition of building and dwelling. Uh at the top of this slide here, I'm quoting from one sixty D, the italicized language is the existing language and the underlying language is the new part. And you see the strike through for the the language that's being rid of. So uh basically it says uh the town or county may not use a definition of building, dwelling, dwelling, bedroom or sleeping unit that is inconsistent with a definition of the same in another statute uh or a rule adopted by the state agency including the state building code. So uh that being said, the town's definitions for specifically the new terms here, building and dwelling, building and dwelling uh need to either meet the state statute or the building code. So you kind of get a choice of which one to use, which is a little interesting. Um so the town's existing definition for building was replaced with the definition from the commercial building code. Uh it's a word for word uh match with the building code. And then also the definition for dwelling, uh that's a word for word match for the definition for dwelling from one sixty D. Not the, not the building code, specifically one sixty D. Um and that's just the part of the definition for dwelling. You can see in your binders, the full definition for dwelling goes on and on from there. It's actually really well definition. That's the part where we're changing, related to those new definitions. And so flipping to page five of the slides, that change in the definition for building also affected how setbacks were applied. Uh most importantly, the definition for setback line. Uh so we've taken a good look at that definition, I think, come up with a pretty good update. Uh setback line is defined as the line in the front, rear and sides of a lot which delineates the area upon which an applicable structure may be built and maintained according to the district regulations. And then we go on to further describe what an applicable structure is. Uh to make it pretty explicit uh what the structures are prior to these amendments. It was somewhat vague as to what structures are included in this definition. So uh the second paragraph, unless otherwise exempted by the ordinance, examples of applicable structures include buildings, storage buildings, workshops, sheds, boat houses, porches, slash decks, gazebo's referring to a section uh in article six, a little bit later. Uh pavilions, canopies, vines, tents, pergolas, which I described as a glorified parkport. And then finally, uh carports. Uh and then uh enclosures for livestock and exotic animals, dwellings and freestanding signs, pools and similar structures. So really, all the types of structures you would think need to be setbacks. And then compare that with the the third paragraph, exempted structures. Include fencing, patios, arbers, retaining walls, swim sets, treehouses, kids' playhouses, doghouses. Um thanks to Mr. Blancher for pointing out with doghouses, we said that uh they're exempted only in residential districts up to a maximum twenty five square feet on each property. Just catching anybody trying to put some extensive dog candles on their property, never is in sense. So say that maximum, and then also exempted our dogs and peers. And the last sentence here is giving references to where uh an applicant, some agreement, and find all these different setback requirements and get some more background information on. So I think we found the right, uh, balance between what's structures are applicable and which are not. Page six. Kind of addressing some of those terms that showed up in that definition for setback line. Uh, deck, uh. Finding a pretty simple definition for the deck, that's anything that's more than six inches above the ground. Uh, and you see, I guess some other reference, uh, other definitions here just for reference. The other new definition here patio, uh, that's. Outdoor space adjoining dwelling typically paved, uh, and no more than six inches above the ground, so we're kind of. Differentiating it from a deck and, uh, that's, that's the, we had to draw a line somewhere, so that's where. We draw that line, a deck meets meets setbacks, whereas patio, which is more level with the ground, does not need setbacks. Uh, porch, for the purposes of. Uh, talking about setbacks, we just say seat deck, uh, it's considered the same thing, uh, for the purposes of setbacks. And then a definition for treehouse, um, that's a sort of structure as a playhouse in the branches of a tree for children to play in. Making it clear that it's not, uh, these treehouses we see on shows these days, people are building half million dollar houses that are actually in tree. Uh, that's not the factory I was talking about, not needing setbacks. Specifically for children to play in. Uh, and then as we go through the rest of these slides, will be some other definitions that show up in article three, but. Uh, best to talk about them as we're going through these other articles. So, uh, page seven, looking at article five. This was, uh, one of the new requirements of one sixty B, the local government and top regulations that have been detected excluding manufactured homes. Uh, the entire zoning jurisdiction, um, it's specifically based on the age of the home. And, uh. In article five, the table of permitted uses, which that would be a good one to maybe, uh, flip through in the binder. Sure, we have, I don't know if we can pull that out, but that just. Uh, points out, there's a few lines in the table of permitted uses that have manufactured home, there's three different lines. Uh, one for class A, one for class B, and one for class C, and those classes are referring to. Uh, the age of that manufactured home, and that ties to the town's system definition for it. Uh, there's also a statement in article six, um, regarding the age of manufactured homes. That line in article, article six is being removed based on this one sixty D requirement, and you cannot exclude manufactured homes based on the age of the home. And, uh, also those classes that are in the table of permitted uses and also the definition. We've, uh, updated the definition to no longer use those classes for where it's no longer based on the age of the home, so. All that being said is that we've removed items and ordinance that are related to the age of a manufactured home. Then, page eight. Couple of smaller items here. Uh, on page five, article six. This goes back to the definition for setback line that I just read, where gazebo's was listed, uh, and referred to this section of article six. That gazebo's don't need to be a rear yard setback if they're bordered by a river or pond, and that's just. Getting at the idea that gazebo's that are often out in the water. They wouldn't meet the rear yard setback because they're out of the water, and that's what this addresses, is, uh, that those types of situations still meet the required setbacks. Uh, and like I just mentioned, in article five, um, page nine of article six. That's where we also see that for, uh, age of manufactured home. Uh, on page nine now. The, uh, in article eight, there's a section where we just refer to the newest standards and one sixty B related to competence and this. That this goes for board members and also town staff. Uh, so we just explicitly reference the requirements in one sixty B. Now, article nine gets into, uh, some mini-subjects. Um, page one talks about, uh, limited who has authority to submit applications for a development approval. And that term development approval is pretty important, uh, with respect to one sixty B. The new terms, I showed the definition here, uh, includes, I'm just kind of focused on the bold of language here, includes. Zoning permits, special use permits, variances. Um. Plan approvals, permits issued, development agreements, and building permits issued. Basically, almost anything that the town approves. With respect to development in the town zoning ordinance is a development approval. And, uh, the way one sixty B is written, the development approval is attached to and run with the land. So, uh, if someone gets an approval to build a house and they they sell that block, person applies a lot. Uh, that approval runs with that planes, and the person applies a lot, still have that same approval. Um, and because that term development approval is. Specially laid out in one sixty B, we also differentiate it with the other types of approvals in the town's ordinance. Uh, we'll see that on the next page, but. Um, we'll have development approvals and then the other types of approvals, non development approvals, just to catch off. Or anything that is not the approval. So, page eleven, listing here the types of development approvals that are in the town's ordinance. The certificates of zoning compliance, CC, the probably the most common one. Uh, also special use permits, variances, uh, tree removal permit. Uh, livestock, exotic animal permit, and a temporary use permit, also known as a special event permit. And then non-development permits are the golf cart counter registration. And also the recently written mobile food units or food trucks. Uh. Some of obviously those are non-development approvals, they, those types of approvals that can't run with the land, so they're they're definitely not developed. A special charge out. And, uh, we spell out those definitions in article three. Page twelve. Continuing the, uh, article nine. On page three twelve, you'll see the clarification for the word, but it, uh, just matches exactly with one sixty B language. Uh, with respect to when a town meets the mail out notices for public hearings and, uh, reasoning procedures. Very similar to what the town did already, the town just matched exactly with what one sixty B says. Uh, page four, someone's small one, deciding the language that. Administrator or staff shall follow requirements regarding administrative materials. That's, uh, talking about passing out administrative materials prior to a public hearing. And we refer to the, uh, section one sixty B, so that's clear what those requirements, what they are. Page five. The regarding quasi judicial hearings, the board chair must rule on the objections to inclusion or exclusion of administrative material. And such ruling may be appealed to the full board, that's a specific requirement for one sixty B, so we. How that works in our language from one sixty B. And, uh, similarly, uh, must allow parties with standing participate fully in an evidence hearing. Uh, again, pretty much out of that language exactly from one sixty B. Um, like I mentioned in article eight. Uh. That, uh, was that, we had some language related to, uh, how much of interest that was in article nine, that's been removed and that's in article eight. Uh, page eight, this one's pretty logical, you can't make an applicant wait for final actions on those amendments. Kind of do that anyway, so. Unless. Amendments are finalized already, the applicant can use the. Uh, ordinance as it's currently written, they don't have to wait for the board to approve on anything that they might be working on. Other little things here, uh, development approvals must be right, they run with the land. And, uh, also, we mentioned written notices notices for determinations of development regulations. There's a requirement that development approvals must be in writing, writing, but there's also this requirement that. If it's not an approval, it also needs to be in writing, so discovering development denials instead of an approval. Uh, now, page thirteen. Is that, uh, the first goal, what there is addressing third party down zonings, that's when. Someone that doesn't own a property is trying to get a property reason. Uh, that might make it harder for the owner of the property. Uh, to develop their land, so this language prevents that from being a possibility. Uh, sixteen and seventeen just, uh, refers to the one sixty D language, dash seven to. Uh, about conditions on special use permits, they have to, to meet the requirements of that section in one sixty B. But conditions that don't match those requirements. Page eighteen. Uh, must obtain applicants' consent to the conditions of a special use permit, I understand that the town already does that, this makes it. An explicit requirement. Page nineteen, uh, most require certificate of occupancy or CEO for working on a building permit. I'm pretty much sure any certificate of zoning compliance, CCC, that requires a building permit. I require the CEO, so we've added that sentence to page nineteen of article nine. Uh, going on to page twenty eight. Uh, person appeals, uh, an enforcement order that. Uh, also pauses enforcement, including fines, so during the payment process. Find awesome pause. Uh, page twenty eight, twenty nine, per appeals, uh, officially made decision being appealed, has to be present at the, at the hearing as a witness. Uh, in article three, just to mention, we got a new definition for special use permit. That matches the language of one sixty B, it was already a definition for special use. But the term special use permit is pretty explicit, one sixty B, so we. Add that as well. Page fourteen, talking about article fourteen. Um. Article fourteen is related to vested rights and. Uh, one sixty D. Uh, updated some of those terms for vested rights, so for one. Uh, the old term site specific development plan is now called site specific vesting plan. And also the old term phase development plan is now called multi-phase development plan. Uh, the first term I mentioned, the site specific vesting plans, those include subdivision flats and special use permits. And the main point here is the old one sixty A language applies vested rights. Only to the site specific development plan and phase development plans. Uh, whereas the new one sixty D now only applies it to those updated terms, site specific vesting plans, all phase development plans. But also the vested rights apply to building permits, other local development approvals, in other words, development approvals of the building permits. Uh, and also development agreements. So, flip into page fifteen. Uh, one sixty D allows the town to set the duration of those vested rights, and then all those, uh, different. Types of, uh. Items have their own different, uh, length, just like a building permit. The six months, other local development approvals has a one year default unless it's specified in the town's ordinance, more on that second. Uh, the site specific vesting plans are two to five years. Uh, that's what one sixty D allows, is two to five years, the default's two years. Once the time, the town determines more time is needed, not to exceed the five years. The town's ordinance sets the default to two with a limit of three years rather than five, just so you know that. Uh, it could be increased to five if that's what the town decides, but it's currently set at a limit of three. And, uh, multi-phase developments have a vested rights period of seven years, developing brief, like indefinite. And I quote, when it's there from one sixty B. This refers to it as reasonable duration, it doesn't set a limit. Uh, and going back to that one year default on the number two in this list of the local development approvals. Uh, that's unless otherwise specified, and the one caveat to that is the CCC's, the certificate zoning clients. Uh, that is set two years, so it doesn't use the one year default, uh, the CCC would be now at two years rather than one. And then article fourteen also updates where it relates to building permits and vested rights. Article fifteen, pretty quick. Uh. The language that was in article twenty two, two fifteen regarding right of entry for, uh, violations of the ordinance. And, um, if you book in your packet, there's some explanation there, we also discussed. Not just violations, but also inspections for development approval. And that's what was, uh, why we were looking at this one sixty B. Specifically talks about that those inspections for development approval need to be during reasonable business hours. Versus violations that have a little more V way, that's the one, those, uh, site visits kind of are. And page three, we also address revocation of the development approvals, uh, those development approvals can be, can be revoked. In article twenty two, uh, that old term special exceptions changed to special use permits. Uh, and then like I mentioned a minute ago, we change, we move the right of entry language to article fifteen. And then lastly, page eighteen, the subdivision ordinance, the main change there being on page thirty, thirty nine. There was a, a page and a half of language there regarding subdivision guarantee improvements. Uh, which is after an applicant gets their preliminary plaque, they can either. Go and build all the roads and water and sewer pipes if they're part of the subdivision, and then get their final plaque. Or in lieu of doing that, they can provide guaranteed improvements under this section of the subdivision ordinance. Uh, to get their final plaque and move forward, and that's what this addresses, basically we struck. All of the language that was in there and just refer to the requirements provisions of one sixty B, so it's. Um, clear exactly what's required in that section. And that is it.
Appreciate the hard work, Jeff. Any of us read books on this kind of statute, really go above and try to read them, you don't do this every day. It gets very few. Glad we got to speak to it sometime, say that, explain it in better detail. Of what means. So it can be complicated, what happened in town to fulfill the code. You know, a lot of, I'm, the time I've been here. So, nothing about, none of this, all of a sudden, you know, you're trying to understand setbacks, why you can't build a, this place is a property now, why you got to have this, why you contested. So, it's complicated, any changes in government, all these. Rules of, robbing, where. But these changes, then everybody else. We need, uh, comments for, for the mission to have an apple.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, um. As I just finished doing the audit for code enforcement officials on one sixty B, thank you for bringing my headache back again today. Um, it, there's, there's a lot of information in there, and I, I thank you for trying to make it more clearly readable.
more clearly readable in the documents that we have, and in lieu of that, my suggestion will be on page fifteen, where we had the third topic, site-specific vesting, the two to five years. Default is two years, but in the long was five years, and we have ours set at three. I would say change that to match the wording that's in one sixty D, change our three to five, that way we're not making changes, and we're just following what's listed there. I think in, in the future, that will make it easier, because we can say we're, we're exactly the client, and the three years is going a little above what we have to do. But I think it'll be easier just to do it as the five years instead of the three. Other than that, I think everything that you put in there, I mean, it follows it, it matches well, thank you for your work.
Any other comments? If there's a comment, should I have a motion, we open this up, public discussion. Come on, favorite?
Aye.
All opposed? If you have any votes, on or otherwise, that want to make any comments on this, on changing some of the chapter one sixty D. Seeing that we do not have it, that's an allegation that we spoke to the public reach. So then. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, staff has nothing else to put in here, we do have orders twenty-one dash oh one, orders for doctor tetraments of on order, and subdivision commercial regulations. On the more kinds of general statute, one sixty D, for the pound available. I have motions that we set this order. Yes.
To change that from three to five, we'd send back to the county.
We need a separate motion to amend that. Correct that. Just make official. With doctor ordinance, we had the change that we're recording in the Okay, can I have a motion to set that order with the change? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Along with that, we had to have assistance, that federal board commission would use that, and so it's great race. I have a motion, assistance statement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have. I think that's standing the other thing on one sixty D.
There's a small upgrade to the program that's coming to you.
The, the far from down, sitting here, we look at this. It does get very complicated, trying to understand all the things about. I can say that I believe that everything. You don't feel this every day, a lot of them remember this, but.
One clarification, question there. Mr. Blanchard? I'm missing. Just wanted to make it clear that these were going to affect the date I mentioned earlier, the twenty-first, July first.
If you have any comments, the ones that I made on the agenda, old business update on the Bron Riverwalk project.
To go back for just one second, what we were talking about, the the way that it's stated in law, they've gone back and changed it to, we can either make it active at the final date, or we can make it active, retroactive, back to June nineteenth. I believe it's the date, so it can either be an act that they're going to affect now, or as long as it's not past the last day.
And that's what I was thinking, it could be effective as of today, or specifically make it for July first. Make it clean.
Well, and then you, we're gonna, let's, if we're making it July first, this draft ordinance we've got, which says section five says this ordinance is effective July first, is that?
Good enough, we still want that over July first, but. Say it?
Again, just we were.
Yeah, yeah.
So when we sent it, signing will say that.
We clear on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, under eight old business update on the Bron Riverwalk project.
The park director did not be here tonight, but we want to be known, he's working hard on the U nine. And also, the brushing for the restaurants that are being they can see this, and the contractor is becoming to start this on. Something really, it's very exciting. They have a slight problem with the restaurants that are coming, we thought, by each of those, like we know, can you take that's moving forward and what's it going to be?
What, I might talk about that, the old set of things. Think like, there's connection to the ground to feel itself as a backup. Kickback up, there's a bunch of thought through that, so systems. Discharge, waste, didn't have a new section, required the old section. So we've gone to B.
Okay.
That is even, you know, went by work, the screen works and everything, for coordination. It's like gone well, okay, that worked out. This time, said having a screen, the railway, this is changing, we sit on the craft of the elevation. The way you said, everybody should be able to see the spring without any problem, the way the elevation goes up. That makes the spring a lot higher.
No issue with headlights going behind the, the factory?
We don't, I don't think that would be an issue.
The sign looks good, I was a good use of our normal sign, putting that one over top of it, and then I said, we're using how to get next time.
I'm literally sure, what my favorite.
What is it?
I don't watch it. Um, so I look for, I hope we have a good night, I hope I return that. Probably, it's George. A B, I'm sitting here, twenty-one, twenty-two draft, but discussion.
It's Mr. Mayor, just wanted to update you on the last one. I was talking about last month, with some of the staff positions that I mean, our attempt sent out an email after four years, but and we have been, I do, and we'll have some required figures for you. One of the ideas that we brought on, thinking, possibly, we the lead inspector slash if that information comes in the front.
Something that's in the we're still discussing. Basically, put it back forward. I'm keep this. See how they go. Don't do a lot of detail. And not conversation with. Certain individuals. Okay, move to A C, something, spring, ranch, bears. Don't have anybody something, um, George.
Well, I just wanted to know that we are, estimates of the parents of the private children. Well, it's so good. Just in private children, they have people, perfect, so I have the usual. I can see. And Jeff knows for period. Not feeling, just to be contract, this idea of what's standard. As far as the thickness of the asphalt.
Yeah, we, uh, but the thinking all together is to like, not completely that small. We got, it's just how, they need to make the repairs, so they understand the backfill and compact everything, right? The same issues in the future, in addition to destroying the details, specifications, the most, together with the site plan. That shows the actual areas that the contractor needs to repair, so that the estimates that the town's pulling together are bearing out of that.
I'm not taking that all out.
Yes, it's kind of, oh, three separate things, one, Jerry Trump's ground, that's Now, we did have one factor. Means a long time that it was actually, that the entire subdivision being paid. But, um, we think that we probably have five, five years on that, and we're thinking possibly we may be doing some type of extend the life of what is currently there, but to get into that. Get into that.
That's a very, I'm sure for looking at something, need to be done.
Yes.
Any comment?
Just to be clear, I'm not the president of the district.
Okay, do we have any set timeframe that we look, any work that we start up there?
Yes, we need to start no later than year first, so it's, you know.
What we got? We got national plan or?
That you asked.
We just reached out. Here we move the state D, the federal vision, twenty thirty. Adrian, you're clear?
Yeah, can you hear?
Can you give us an update?
Absolutely, I am doing a screen share right now, can you guys see my screen?
It's back here, it's gonna take a minute for it to show there.
Gotcha. So you're saying it's gonna take a second before it's on, it's on their big screen, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We're ready. Okay, you guys can see the, you guys can see the screen now, and you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, we hear you fine.
Great, well, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to share with everyone on some great information about the Vision twenty thirty Public Input Process, which is about to come to an end. But since the last time you guys met, we've had two public input meetings, and I've done some research as far as you know, pulling together some census data, and I've got some really cool information for you guys tonight. Um, as I think most of you know, we had two great public meetings. We had one on April fourteenth at the Brunswick Riverwalk Park. And we had another one on the fifteenth at Town Hall, and that was only because of rain. We originally gonna, going to do the future downtown area. But at the park, there were forty-one people that signed in. But what we're thinking is there was probably seventy-five people total. You know, there were some people at the park who were just kind of meandering through the park that, you know, we brought in and got some of their input. They may not have signed in, and there were also, you know, several situations where you know, a couple would show up, and only, you know, like, the husband or the wife would sign, but the other person would not, so we felt like there were about seventy-five people that attended the public meeting at the park on that Wednesday, and then there were about another twenty people, we think, attended the public meeting at Town Hall on that Thursday, the fifteenth. And out of, um, out of that, we've got a lot of public survey results, so we had, you know, some good turnout at our public meetings. However, we do also have an online survey as well, and people who submitted a paper copy of their survey, those paper copies have already been inputted. So there are seven hundred and thirteen survey responses right now. And based on what we can see, out of those seven hundred and thirteen responses, about forty-six percent live in Belleville, fifty percent do not, and about forty percent aren't quite sure, or four percent are not quite sure. There's ninety-seven percent of survey respondents that have visited the Brunswick Riverwalk Park. And there's also ninety-seven percent that support extending the Brunswick Riverwalk Trail. And when survey respondents were asked, you know, what amenities they want to see at the park, I polled all of the amenities that got more than fifty percent of a response, so I think each respondent was allowed to choose, I think, ten. So based out of that, seventy-five percent want to extend the Riverwalk, seventy-one percent want outdoor restaurant and seating space, sixty percent want an amphitheater, sixty-four percent want food truck options, fifty, fifty-four percent wants like a social plaza or a social pavilion, fifty-one percent want botanical gardens or rain gardens, and overall, ninety-one percent support the de, the development of a future downtown Belleville. So that's what we have seen so far, as far as, you know, people showing up for those two public meetings and looking at the, the survey responses, and all that's through Survey Monkey done online, does anybody have any questions specifically about survey responses or meeting attendance?
I think I'm having a failure on that, I'm glad to see we've got that many responses total. I'm glad to see forty-six percent live in Belleville, that's higher than I thought it would be.
You know, and well, and I would agree with you too there, because I do also feel like, you know, coming from someone who, and I, I don't live in Belleville, I live in Wilmington. But so many people that I talk to that live in Wilmington, they know about the Belleville Park, you know, they know about the Riverwalk, so I am actually very excited to see You know, they know about the Riverwalk. So I am actually very excited to see that we're close to fifty percent of the respondents are from Belleville because I'm so well aware that there's a lot of people who know about the Brunswick Riverwalk Park that actually. So what I did was I went into um, the census data. And what I did was I looked at the twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen American Community Survey Data Source. And generally speaking, when we're looking at the town of Belleville compared to Brunswick County, and I think this is an important, you know, analysis, analysis to look at because, you know, as we're asking the community about, you know, what it is that they want to see for the future park development and future downtown, we need to, you know, kind of understand truly who makes up Belleville. We're looking at the town of Belleville has a larger family size compared to the rest of Brunswick County. They also have a younger household compared to the rest of Brunswick County. Uh, the town of Belleville is less white and more black compared to the rest of Brunswick County. And the town of Belleville also has more single males and single females living alone. They have higher education levels. This is specifically related to associate bachelor degrees, not PhDs. And they also have a higher percentage of, of households with a computer and with broadband internet subscription. So I thought these were all, you know, very interesting things to learn when, you know, looking at the, the census data. Especially understanding how, you know, some of these survey results are coming in. And as far as economic and housing characteristics, the town of Belleville compared to Brunswick County has a barely slightly lower medium, uh, median income, household income uh, only by just over a thousand dollars. Uh, the town of Belleville has more households with earnings. As in people are, you know, going to work and creating earnings compared to a fewer households with social security and retirement income. And that kind of goes back to looking at Brunswick County with having an older population. So it looks like, you know, town of Belleville has, you know, more people that are, you know, going to work and whatnot, not so many people that are retired. And the town of Belleville has more occupied housing units. The town of Belleville has housing units with more rooms, so they seem to be larger um, houses as well. And the town of Belleville has a higher percentage of housing units with a mortgage, which might also reflect the younger population, whereas the older population may have already paid off the house. And the town of Belleville has uh, homeowners that are charging more for rent. So I thought those were all kind of, you know, interesting census data, character profiling that I would like to take into consideration as we're moving forward with Vision twenty uh, twenty thirty and matching the census data with the survey results, you know, to really make, you know, good solid recommendations about how the Brunswick Riverwalk Park should be expanded and, you know, the future downtown Belleville area develops. And as always, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Comment from the commission with questions?
Any questions, but uh, thank you for the extra statistical data that was at the end of this. That was nice to hear, see.
Adrian, uh, actually I've learned uh, learned more myself. For some reason I was like, population was over in our town, but that's the facts show otherwise.
Yeah, no, I, I, I totally agree with you and that's, that's something that I'm really enjoying about this process is, you know, there is, you know, census data that's gonna continue to come out, you know, there's survey responses that can, that can come in. So, you know, this is all kind of a, sort of a learning experience for all of us and we can take this Vision twenty thirty plan and we can shape it based on, you know, the data and the responses and, and everything else. So I think it's a great opportunity to, you know, we can all learn as we go.
Adrian, I'd say we thank you for this, uh, give us a good insight, another new vision point we can look at from which direction to head in. And I appreciate your hard work you're doing. And we look forward to moving on with the Vision twenty thirty plan. Thank you so much, Adrian.
Absolutely, and thank you so much. So um, just to let you guys know, and a little friendly reminder is we're leaving the um, the survey that's online, we're gonna leave that open for the next two days. So any chance you guys get to spread the word and say, hey, we, you know, we've got uh, seven hundred and thirteen surveys, but you know, eight hundred survey responses wouldn't be so bad. So if you guys get a chance to spread the word in the next few days, please do so. And uh, and yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to do some more writing and whatnot. And at the next um, commissioners meeting, I will have a, I'll have another update for you guys.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. We really appreciate it. Good luck and forward to the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? If not, we'll move on to A E, planning board, rule. Let's go to the.
I just wanted to bring them for you, the planning boards, while we spare the time, working on the way to the theater updating them. Our church has reviewed that and we are asking that you do adopt this tonight. They made just a few even slight changes so we don't have to constantly be updating the document. Instead of having the meeting day stated, meeting day stated in the document, they removed that specifically. They updated their full advantages and also talked about the interest policy. So um, they're asking that you adopt this for one, for the victim. Move forward and uh, see that more efficient.
I read through everything, rose. I think everything is put in here pretty consistent with rules and procedures that were set out. I didn't see anything to bring up in the issue. Mission. Or uh, over there, you had an opportunity to look at this.
Yeah, and I, I sent a draft copy from Apex, they explored and uh, they had some, you know, amendments to it and I actually like what they have. It's simple and easy to read.
Yeah, I read through all of it too. I'm trying to see if I can see anything.
Do all those boards have some?
Okay, uh, we don't have, could I have a question? We've said the uh, the rules, procedure for planning. All in favor? All opposed, either. Thank you. Okay, moving on to A. Yes. Twenty-one, ten, but it's in the personal call and procedure man.
Yes, I, I'm very happy that we are on the final stretch of this document. And I know you reviewed it several times, just wanted to make sure our time period has been very helpful to us and making sure that we don't hit any pitfalls. Smartly, we're all performing on the policy. And if you are comfortable with it, we ask you to adopt the resolution. So this will be as a.
We see any issues and all, but um.
Now, sir, this version of the, I thought was fun. Um, we had it, uh, it's been adopted, I understand, by resolution earlier. And the big thing that we talked in the last few days, last week was uh, that we do not want to adopt it by ordinance, we want to adopt it by resolution. You know, that creates less legal headache for you, it gives the town manager, for example, you can have circumstances come up where somebody really needs to be fired immediately, for example, without any drag down process and we adopt by ordinance, shouldn't have discretion there. Shouldn't follow through this path to the latter. As it stands now, you adopt by resolution with the language we've got in it, provides a little bit of management discretion.
When I went through, we called my brother property through time. It's pretty consistent through the town.
What you're trying to do is provide a, a, a fair and equitable policy for employees. But the thing you've got to balance against that is don't turn your workforce into the post office workers. You know, you want to have some discretion to get rid of, of people. And you don't want to, to have so administration stuck with having to jump through every procedural bit perfectly or else forces we move along.
I think most everything is very, I live real life on personal, personal stuff that even to employees does give you membership. They're required to have that system chances. Look, didn't think. But it's not, uh, let's say some discussion for the commissioner or comments. Now, much we uh, set the resolution, twenty-one, back to the resolution, this is the first cost thing you're managing like. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, either. They get a chance, just the commissioner, and read all of it. Take some time to sit down, read. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Nine A to group twenty-one, twenty-two, but you, they are called uh, A E, update on coronavirus. I think most of y'all, I think the governors also talking right. Reference what time you put it on. So I think we're gonna get an update. I think also what y'all here at the national level as well that happened today, I think tomorrow, there's gonna be some other change made about mask wearing. How close you have to be, I think, that's just about change. I probably will put out some of that tonight. Probably change all this. Be updated quite a bit. I think the recommendation comes out. Why have it be, you don't have to wear a mask outside and especially if you're already vaccinated. There are some other things about, I think we'll talk about this. And common or said on that break, six foot or six foot or. Just don't think it's uh, not a major issue outside. There's still gonna be some other rate comments or restrictions when you're set uh, inside. I mean, people still. But I guess we'll find out in the light of the law. So, um, any other comments on that?
Just wanted you to know that um, the additional information on the American Rescue Plan should be tripling down sometime around May.
Your comments? Okay, now we'll move on to the regular agenda under nine A, the year twenty-one, twenty-two, phase two vegetation agreement, removal contract.
We have advertised for our phase two primary and secondary for the contractors. You flip to progress on our always on page twelve. Where if you flip over to page six, you're gonna see the. Then tab, um, that's gonna be the spreadsheet that has the blue and yellow. And it's gonna act as a. Contact that they submit their bids, also they have the. Boson, um, she posted this ultimately. That is awesome. Bringing in the state true service, people are primary contractor that's here. And post retreat is, is our primary contractor in twenty nineteen. To uh, move forward as the most responsible primary and secondary contractor. So if you agree with this recommendation, um, we have fully vetted both of these companies. And again, both of these companies have been restarted down in the past. We have not had any issues. Um, we've had a big company, and both of them have been running to close the pipeline. It was very specific to us, we need to last the action.
And you prove. Like they, you know, the work, you know, proved to us that they're capable of handling preventing situations that come up. And not only that, they do a very timely manner, they have responded to the families with very, you know, coordination has been great. Let y'all know me, reading why we should. I don't discuss. I get a motion to protect the recommendation of staff. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, either. Thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, nine B, transportation update. Basically, like I say, it's fairly easy to make comments on it. In fact, you do have a copy that lists the uh, the, we do have two projects which we had to talk about in the past. I have a meeting uh, that you can be on Wednesday. See if you think updates, basically, the only thing that really happens is they get old projects that are put back. They're regenerated, those that are completed or started up. So right now, it's not any, what I call new projects. There will be some money coming up as far as some things we may look at. Get grants that would be available. And we're gonna have to take advantage of, it's gonna have to look a bit harder because they could say they could have, but most times you got a batch, you got a batch of money for a lot of these grants that come out, which makes it harder on smaller towns. It's not just us, we've got a small town as well. Some of their smaller towns have the same problem we have as these towns that are in county. We'll work through some of that and find out what most can go after. And we got to have everything in place that when the money, these grants are available. The federal government's still pushing really hard on volley paths, interconnected roads. Do a lot of funding out there, but the headache still comes down. We've got to pay a hundred percent of that out before we get money back. That's where the headache's coming. Some of these small projects, uh, they will be up in the meeting. But, and we're there. Yeah, I keep watching that, hopefully it's out, something's going out. They're coming on that, we're moving out of ten. We close session on the, we'll try and get on station one forty-three, dash three eighteen, dash eleven, eight three, for what our town attorney to have a motion that we're going to close session.